No problem then. Okay, we got everybody here, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:16. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance of the United States, to America, and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Yeah, I don't think we're ever gonna get the hang of that. The feedback's throwing me off. Uh, adjustments? I see none?
No, uh, actually, uh, Chair, if it's okay, um, I'd like to, when it comes to our, uh, Director's Report, I'd like, uh, Athletic Director Gordy Sawes to present an athletics update with some of the things that they've done this spring. And, um, I'd also, um, I made a mistake and our administrator nominations, uh, we had mistakenly omitted Susan Inman, so I'd like to be able to add her to the nominations for the administrators.
Okay, um, do we need to officially vote on that? Uh, let's go for it. I'll make a motion to adjust the agenda as Mr. Nelson just requested. Do I have a second?
I'll say that.
Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Uh, Kendra, how do you vote? Did I lose you, Kendra?
Came over to help me.
Yes.
She was muted still, yeah. She's still ahead of you, Jonathan. Uh, Emily, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, John Rue?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So we'll make those adjustments as we get to them. Hopefully I'll remember. If not, please remind me, Matt. Uh, approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from May 4th, 2020, and the minutes from May 11th, 2020, uh, virtual meeting and a virtual workshop. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll take the vote. Uh, Kendra, how do you vote?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Uh, John Rue?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so the next section we have on the agenda is public comments. Um, I see we have a lot of public on here. It looks like a majority are spring coaches, so I assume where your positions are one of the topics tonight. Uh, is there anybody that would like to make any public comment at this moment? Uh, hearing none, and it doesn't look like anybody's trying to talk with their microphones muted. Uh, we will move on. Uh, communications, Mr. Nelson?
No communications.
Uh, then we'll move on to committee reports. Construction updates. The floor is yours.
Okay, uh, I will start with our high school and technical center project. The punch list items that, uh, the contractor has addressed have been verified by the architect. And at this time, there are forty-two items that remain open on the punch list for the contractor to address. There are an additional sixteen items that we, as the Sanford School Department, need to verify. We have to verify that everything is working proper- properly. The largest category of the outstanding items remains in mechanical systems with approximately eighty-six thousand dollars of items to complete. Uh, I want to point out that we are withholding approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in retainage on this particular subcontractor. The contractor is requesting the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in retainage be reduced. Our architects will evaluate this request and reduce it in accordance with the amount of items that the design team and the Sanford School Department agree have been, uh, completed. This reduction is contingent upon the, uh, electrical contractors', uh, lien that they have against the contractor being addressed, um, uh, for that. Uh, also, I'll, I'll have more information on that in a second. Um, our facilities director, Ty Paul Bryant, and Assi- Assistant Facilities Director Bob Welch are reviewing the mechanical and electrical systems, and they're compiling a list of known deficiencies and issues as well. Uh, once this list is documented, we're gonna set up a meeting with the contractor and the engineers to review it and how we can best address those items. Uh, some of those items may be added, uh, to the punch list. Uh, regarding the lien, um, that's on the building, I did work with our legal counsel on Friday. If you remember, a subcontractor has filed a lawsuit against the contractor. Uh, as part of that lawsuit, there is no claim that the Sanford School Department is responsible for any of the subcontractors' claimed extra costs. Rather, this is a dispute solely between the contractor and the subcontractor. The Sanford School Department is involved only because the state of Maine has a mechanics lien statute that allows a subcontractor to record a lien on the owner's property and include the owner in the lawsuit. Uh, you'll remember when we became aware of the lawsuit, our legal counsel advised, um, the contractor through their attorneys that while the school department, uh, remained involved in the lawsuit, we would have no choice but to withhold the amount of the lien, which is just under seven-hundred thousand dollars. The contractor's attorneys are gonna recommend, uh, to their contractor that they bond off the lien if the school department will pay the remaining contract balance and retainage. What that involves is the contractor obtaining a bond and the amount of the lien. Once the bond is obtained, then the subcontractor's claim is secured, and the subcontractor is obligated to discharge the lien and dismiss the school department from the lawsuit. Our legal, uh, counsel told the attorneys that if the lien is bonded off, we would have no reason to withhold the lien amount to protect ourselves. Um, saying that, um, we also have to make sure, uh, that with a bond, that the full balance and retainage would be paid in full. So, uh, if there are remaining punch list items, and there are, which I just went over, then we wanna make sure we keep in the retainage an amount representing the value of those punch list items with that, but that we could probably pay the total balance minus that amount, uh, with that. So, um, yeah, that's kinda where we are with the high school and technical center, uh, project. Uh, are there any questions on that construction update?
Nope, not here.
None for me, Matt.
Okay, we'll move over to our second construction project. That's the MCS construction project. Um, interior completion of the addition to Margaret Chase Smith School is close to complete. Our, uh, architect is saying about ninety-nine percent. Uh, punch lists have been completed on both floors of the new classroom wing. The remaining work in the gym is final paint, some flooring, and athletic equipment. They do have the equipment, uh, the athletic equipment, gym equipment scheduled with the exception of the divider curtain, uh, because the plant that, uh, manufactures the divider curtain is shut down due to COVID-19. So that's likely to be installed at a later date. In the renovation portion, um, of the project, the two classroom wings are also nearing completion. The center core and, uh, administration addition are following, and they're gonna be the last to wrap up. Finishes are just beginning in the admin addition. Uh, on the outside of the exterior of the project, there's a lot of work going on. Loam and seed are in progress. Uh, temporary irrigation for the playfield has been installed to help establish grass. Trucks will be hauling in water to irrigate the remainder of the new grass. Base paving is nearly complete with the curbing being installed. Wallards, fencing, light poles are all being installed. Um, our subcontractor has coordinated the playground installation with us, with the Sanford School Department. Um, the Conex boxes that we used, uh, for a lot of storage, those have all been emptied into the school. And the furniture, that furniture will be distributed as the rooms become available. Our delay claim, um, right now that's going on between the school department and the contractor, that is currently in discussions, uh, right now, uh, between the architect and the contractor. Our next meeting, uh, for construction will be a week from tomorrow with that. So, are there, um... And then also for the, um, Margaret Chase Smith School, I have a update, uh, for our, um, FFNE, our furniture fixtures and equipment phase of the project. Uh, back in early April, we kicked that off with a meeting to review the project's drawings, goals, and expectations, and the FFNE needs. Uh, one of the things that we were looking to do was, um, with the existing room and spaces to try to reuse as much furniture as we could. And then those new areas would be priorities to receive new products. Uh, so for example, we have incorporated four new fourth grade classrooms in the expansion plans along with art and music classrooms. Um, our consultants came down for three days in mid-April for site visits on our elementary schools to do their best to evaluate and document uh, all the different classrooms, uh, of, uh, potential furniture that would be coming over to MCS. They tried to sort all of those materials into one of three categories: relocate, evaluate, uh, or, uh, donate, in essence dispose with that. So they looked at over seventeen-hundred pieces of furniture. We're still continuing to work with those teachers just to make sure that we have a really good handle on, um, that furniture and what could be coming to, um, Margaret Chase Smith School. That is kind of a beast and a challenge of a project, so our consultants are working hard on that. Um, our consultants developed strategies for the existing furniture scheduled for the reuse, and then they selected and prepared new proposed products. We had some team meetings to, uh, present tho- that information, uh, with the bid form, forms, furniture plans, both existing and new, product specs, sheets, and product images. Uh, at the end of April, uh, we released the furniture package for public bid. Uh, with that, we, uh, submitted it for, before doing that, to the Maine Department of Education for review. Uh, their initial comments were returned with very little, uh, impact on the overall, or, package. Um, and so our consultants will pay a response to the Department of Education once the final products are determined for purchase. The project received considerable interest requests from twelve bidders, most of them who were local to the Northeast. Nine of the bidders submitted responses, uh, on May 11th. Uh, of those responses, four were complete and most, um, were in the, uh, twelve product categories. Um, the bids were received and compiled into a bid analysis form, and, um, we contacted them for more information if it was required. Uh, we had one company that was apparently the low bidder with a total bid of two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-three. That did come over budget since our budget is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So our consultants are analyzing all those categories and doing our best to be able to, um, reduce that, um, for that. So, um, once we get to that, we will be looking at, uh, consideration. Next steps are, this week, uh, working with the dealers and vendors to establish those final budgets. And then, uh, next week, uh, we'll be looking, uh, between the end of this week and the end of July, fabrications and shipping of products to the warehouses, and then at the end of July, beginning of August, delivery and installation for that. So, uh, that's a lot, but a lot going on. That's just ramped up recently. Uh, I'm looking to have a, um, a core building committee meeting, uh, soon to kinda update where we are in terms of, uh, not only just all of our projects and the, um, uh, furniture bids for that. So are there any questions for the MCS project that I can help with?
Uh, hey, Matt, just real quick, and I don't think I missed it, but, uh, they're on schedule for the fall, right?
Yeah, right now, we, right, uh, based on the schedule that we have, uh, we are ba- based on that, we are working hard to make sure we can get our elevators up and inspected to be able to do that. But yes, right now, all indications are, as of May 18th, that we are on schedule, um, for an August move-in, uh, to be ready, um, for hopefully the return to school.
Great, thanks, Matt.
Anything else on MCS? All right, I'll move over to the converted middle school, um, for that, on the converted elementary school. Uh, efforts on replacement and finalizing the installation of the wall tile continues. Um, I do have to say that the current quality of installation is much improved from the prior install. Plumbing fixtures are beginning to be reinstalled at these locations. The VCT flooring is being installed around, installed around the building. The window at the B-wing second floor has been removed and is being prepared for new wall and windows. We've already installed the heat piping, um, the heat piping that was already installed had to be removed to do this work. The shoring of the existing structure in the kitchen area has been installed, is about ready for installation of a new beam. The masons have completed some of the brick infill areas back in the E-wing area. Uh, we did meet at the converted elementary school last Friday. I met there with the contractor, their, uh, testing agency, as long with the Maine Department of Education, and, uh, our testing, Northeast Test Consultants regarding, um, asbestos abatement that, uh, the contractor's, uh, testing agency had brought back so we could get more clarification on that to make sure that, um, everyone has the understanding of, um, what needs to be done in terms of any asbestos abatement for them, working on that. Remember, we've already done that a couple times. We went through and did that a while back. The contractor had their person come in. So last Friday's meeting was both of those groups meeting to make sure that everyone is comfortable on the, in the same page going forward in terms of plans for the converted elementary school. So, knock on wood, we won't encounter any delays. Regarding the converted middle school, um, we still don't have an updated schedule from the contractor. Uh, we made another request to them, uh, for the schedule for both projects. We continue to do this and push this, um. With that, the structure to, uh, the contractor is conveying that they're working on redoing a lot of the previously installed items that were not up to their expectations. And so for that, their schedule is not ready. We continue to reiterate that the school is looking, uh, to review plans uh, so that we can make sure that we are all set, uh, first of all, to be able to move in over the summer for this coming fall, um, for that. Um, uh, we also, um, discussed, uh, right now, um, our uncertainty if we would, uh, start construction at the converted elementary school before the converted middle school is complete. You know, the last thing I'd wanna do is start doing construction work at the converted elementary school, and heaven forbid, worst-case scenario, we're not able to move into the converted middle school. So for that reason, we are holding out till we can get a schedule back from them to make sure that we're comfortable, uh, with that. And so without that construction schedule, it's hard for us to make any of those decisions. So I am, uh, standing our ground on that. Uh, I guess in summary, I would say that progress is better than it has been in recent past months. Uh, but I do wanna point out that much of that focus continues to be on work that was already completed once. Uh, we are encouraged by the new, uh, team that the contractor has on-site. They appear to be better organized and working on re-establishing trust of the subcontractors. Uh, but as I've said, and I sound like a broken record, a project schedule is needed uh, by the contractor so that we can be able to plan accordingly moving ahead. There are minimal abatement activities that continue on the job site as needed. The abatement activities and the corrections to remediate damage caused by the abatement activities have really pressured the overall budget, uh, as we've talked about previously. Uh, going back to MCS, we are, uh, the Promethean boards are being installed. Joan Wright's coordinating that. And it's our hope that when they finish, uh, down at MCS, uh, hopefully at the end of this week, that they can transition over to the converted middle school to start putting in Prometheans there that, uh, where they are needed, um, for that. So, any questions, uh, that people have on the converted middle school or converted elementary schedule project?
Uh, hey, Matt, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this before I ask it, but I feel obligated to. Is there a schedule to get a schedule for the, uh...
Yeah, uh, our next, our next meeting with them is this Thursday. And so, um, we continue to be able to push on that, um, and we will continue to push, uh, on that. That's, uh, when we met last Friday at the converted elementary school. Uh, I reiterated once again in person, in addition to all the other correspondences that we've had. So, um, I think the last time when we pushed without them putting on writing, uh, they were looking at us being able to move in at the beginning of August. So, um, that being said, I haven't seen that on paper yet. So until we do, um, we don't have an answer.
Gotcha. Thanks, Matt.
Um, I have a couple questions. Um, I, I know the last time, I mean, when they were so far behind, as you recall that meeting at the end of January, I think, Matt, when, um, the fire marshal and code enforcement came in and we just kinda shook their head. Um, have they been in since, and are, are things being coordinated with them so we don't have any surprises at the end?
Yeah, my understanding is that codes have been in quite regularly. Uh, I'm not sure about the fire marshal. I have, uh, I'm hoping to connect with him this week to be able to check in, but I do know that, uh, code enforcement has been checking in regularly.
And then the other thing, and you know, I share your concern about, um, having anything done at the current junior high that's being converted to the elementary, um, until we're pretty much sure we're getting in to the other building. Um, and what about furniture storage? At one point, there was some discussion about storing furniture at the current junior high, um, as you do all the shifting around. Um, is that still a plan, or is there another place to store the furniture in case we need to use that building still?
Right. So we're not, right now, there are no plans to store any furniture, uh, any furniture at the current junior high or the converted elementary school. We do, are working at, um, trying to find some areas at the converted middle school. We're looking at the STEM area, or the gym area, or the library area. We do have some, uh, desks and things that are currently in the stick-built portables that we have to get out because we're looking to be able to get those, uh, stick-built portables offsite. In order for us to do that, we need a space to be able to get that furniture unloaded. So we are working with the contractor to be able to try to arrange that. But no, there are no plans to have anything stored at the converted, at the converted elementary current junior high.
Is it possible to store any of that furniture at Lafayette once it closes?
Uh, yeah, possibly. I, I think in some ways, uh, our hope is that we're gonna try not to have to make multiple moves if we can help it. Uh, that would be a, kind of an insurance policy, Kendra, for us to be able to do that. If needed be, uh, we could look at doing that. Same thing there. I, we're, we're making plans in place for our teachers to come in, um, in the last week of May to start packing up student belongings. And then the first week of June is when we're gonna have our teachers start packing up for, uh, their upcoming moves. And that will hopefully be able to give us an update on all the schedules just to make sure that if we are doing that, we wanna make sure that that fits in with the schedule. So at that time, we'd have a pretty good idea that, yes, as anticipated, we expect Lafayette School to close next year. And if so, that could be something where we use that as a temporary storage while we are in between.
Thank you.
That's it, uh, for our, uh, construction reports.
Great, thanks, Matt. Uh, Performing Arts Committee, Emily, do you have anything to share with everybody?
Uh, we last met on May 4th, which we had a regular meeting that evening, school committee meeting, so I gave you a report then. We don't meet again until June 1st. We'll have a regular school committee meeting, and I plan on giving you an update then.
Excellent, thanks, Emily. Uh, Kendra, anything you'd like to add for, uh, WSSR advisory?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're moving along. Uh, we have been meeting every week. That will happen for another week or two, and then we'll go to monthly. In the meantime, we have made some progress. We've decided to focus, um, each meeting, um, on, on three different areas. Um, one would be programming, staffing, students, and COVID programming. Uh, another would be budget, operations, technology, and structure. And the third one would be marketing, revenue, commercials, and regionalization. So we're getting there. It's a good group, and, uh, we'll keep moving along. But, um, I would say at the last meeting, um, I, and I think you would agree, Don, lots of kudos for Sarah Schnell and the work she's been doing during this time. She's really, um, knocked it out of the park with a lot of what she's doing, so she deserves a lot of credit. It's, uh, the timing couldn't be better for trying to move this along.
Couldn't agree more, Kendra. Um, okay, then let's move on to Superintendent's Report. Uh, we have our student representatives first. Natalie, Ariel, you guys have anything tonight?
Um, I don't really have a lot. Um, I know that the sport thing will be talking, talked about later, so I'll just have some comments when that comes along, but other than school, the last, like, big assignments coming out, or last assignments being assigned, the, um, Friday, and that's really it.
Excellent. Ariel, anything? You all good? No, wait? There's a little delay. Are you, are you there?
No, Natalie took it away. Yes, we're all good.
Gotcha, thanks. Well, I expect some input from you guys later when they start talking graduation plans too with Mr. Peterman. So, um, Mr. Nelson?
Okay, uh, back again, try to give a COVID up night, uh, COVID-19 update. Uh, we did, I did release, uh, a message out to our, uh, educational community last Friday. Uh, continue to wanna thank all of our students and our families and our teachers for all of their work to distance learning. Um, it's been challenging, but I'm very appreciative of everyone's dedication and commitment to this, um, unprecedented time that we're in. As we get ready to head into June, though, uh, we're, I'm trying to give people an update for planning purposes for the end of the year's schedule. Uh, realizing that, um, distance learning is a tremendous burden uh, that's put on everyone, especially our young students and our young families. Uh, with that, we made the decision not to assign any new learning after Memorial Day. Uh, so the last week in May, we're really gonna look at our students to submit missing assignments and really focus and practice their areas of weakness and review the key concepts. At that time, uh, teachers are gonna be working on, uh, report cards as well as packing up, uh, student work and student belongings in their classrooms. Because in the, uh, first week of June, uh, we're hoping that, uh, students and families can return their school-owned items. This would be their technology, uh, their iPads, their laptops, their power sources, their chargers, et cetera, as well as any books, uh, library, classrooms, um, classroom books, uh, or classroom items. And then we're hoping that, uh, as they turn that in, it'll be an opportunity for them to retrieve their personal belongings. Uh, we're doing this, um, we're gonna have, uh, individual schools sending out their schedules this week so that all of that work can be coordinated in terms of, of the technology that we receive, that that can be organized, uh, through the procedures, uh, that we have. Cause if you remember, March 13th, we, Friday, we left Friday the 13th thinking we were coming back to school on Monday, and we didn't, and we haven't been back since, uh, for that. So it's gonna be, uh, that first week of June, uh, to be able to do that, um, for it. Our last official school day will be June 9th. But, uh, a lot of that is, once students turn in their technology and their books, uh, for the intents and purposes, their year is complete. Uh, once the teaching obligations are over for our teachers, they're gonna move into packing up their rooms as we prepare for, um, the schedule moves. Uh, as a reminder, Lafayette is gonna close, and its teachers will either move over to Carl J. Lamb, Willard, or Margaret Chase Smith. Uh, we're gonna, uh, reopen Margaret Chase Smith in the fall. So we've got teachers going over there from Lafayette, Willard, and Carl J. Lamb. And then grades five through eight, we're gonna have grade eight moving back from the high school over to the converted middle school. And then grades, uh, s- uh, five, six, and seven from the current junior high over to the converted middle school. That's gonna have some domino effects of some moving that will take place also at the high school. So obviously, that's work that we have to do to get all of that ready. And we hope to do that, uh, as I mentioned, um, through the week in, uh, in June. And also, the other thing we have to work on in addition to all of that packing is we have to be able to really take time to work on our- is we have to be able to really take time to work on our curriculum so that we can be prepared for when students hopefully return to us in the fall in terms of us being able to make any adjustments that we have to make. Uh, because realizing that many of our students are probably going to have some gaps in their learning that need to be addressed. So we'll hopefully be working on that, uh, in June, um, for them, um, with it. So as you can see, there's a lot going on, uh, for us, uh, as we continue to work on that. Uh, we've been having our moving meetings happening every Tuesday morning with the administrators. Our, most of our 18 meetings in Wednesdays have been focused on uh, the end of school, wrapping that up and also getting ready to, uh, prepare for next year. So, um, that's the COVID-19 update. If there's any, uh, does anyone have any questions on that?
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the directors' reports. Uh, Matt, where did you want to slide Gordy in on this list?
Uh, do, 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 do. Yeah, I, we could put him in probably number five after, after the school update, yep.
We will do that then.
Just a little quick.
Yep.
Emily, I, I just noticed, Matt, there was something on there about summer programming on the update. Is that, did I miss that or?
No, uh, I missed it, sorry, thank you.
Good catch, Emily.
Yeah, so right now for summer programming, we're, uh, we were hoping to get some guidance from the Department of Education last week, uh, some more formal recommendations and guidance on that. That didn't come, uh, so as I mentioned the last time, we are preparing for that summer programming to be done virtually at this time. Uh, I did reach out to the main Department of Education today and talk to my contact up there, uh, asking for an update. And all I got back was that they're working on it right now. So I was hoping to have something more formal or an actual to share, but right now that's the update that we have that, uh, for us, we are currently at this time. I know Steve and Elliot are working, uh, hard to really look at that as a, um, virtual summer programming.
Um, to bounce off summer programming, um, is there going to be a summer food program again this year?
Yep, there's going to be a summer food programming. It's going to mirror how it's been done in years past. Um, and obviously that program has gone and grown, uh, with that. So, uh, our, um, current distribution of food is going to go right up through Friday, June 12th. And then the following week will transition into our summer food program, which will be offered at various sites throughout the city. Do I have that right, Steve?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move forward. Um, so directors' reports, let's start out with our business administrator, uh, Cheryl. You're muted, Cheryl.
I always forget to have that muted.
Tell me about it.
Um, we've been, um, working really hard on, um, union negotiations, which we discussed in the executive session. So that's been taking up a lot of my time. Um, but we're also working on open enrollment for all of our employees. And as union contracts get finished, those will start rolling out. But we're starting to roll out ones that we can now. Um, and then of course, contracts always, um, go at that time also. Um, and then the financial statements will come out the next one because I was waiting for something to come back from the city. So that will be on the next report. I think that's all I got.
Um, real quick question, Cheryl.
Oh.
Ask this, oh, do you have something else?
Well, and then the CARES Act, I was just thinking of. Um, we've been working on that behind the scenes a lot. Um, we actually went, um, listened to, um, we have a daily meeting and we keep getting probably just about as many unanswered questions as answered questions. Um, the outplacement, of course, is one of the items that have been discussed a lot. We, one of the big things they told us we have to be careful of is maintenance of effort to make sure that, um, we don't pay for something that will actually hurt us in the future for our ED-279. So my goal this week is to start working on looking at past years, estimating where I think we're going to be at the end of this year to determine what, if anything, should be paid by the CARES Act out of those items. So, um, we, we keep getting, we have a couple of mixed, um, the federal says one thing and the state of Maine is saying another. Um, and so we're waiting for the feds to come down with an official ruling. Um, so, and that's a very big item that they're discussing on that. Um, so we're trying to wait for that before we make too many decisions on what's going to get paid by CARES Act.
So Cheryl, essentially what you're saying is you're, this sounds pretty smart to me. So instead of taking that stimulus money, you have to be really careful what you pay for with it because you could hurt yourself for the following budget year, right? All that right?
Especially where we're a high u, user of, um, safe funding. I mean, I think it's even more important that we think about that. So, uh, Steve and I sat in, um, and listened to, um, a piece and they really gave a good explanation of the maintenance of effort and how it could hurt us. So we really want to pay close attention to that.
Uh, that sounds great. Uh, British, what I was going to ask you was actually budget related. Um, I think I mentioned this to you the other day when I bumped into you. Um, so coming down from the state, is there any sort of curtailment discussion or anything at this point with the shortage of revenue coming in? Um, you know, kind of guidance looking forward? Cause, uh, I don't know if you saw on the news, Kenabunk just announced that, you know, there's an article about them cutting their budget significantly going into next year, you know, with all the, the outlook.
Yeah, um, there's, they're saying it, but they're not saying how much or, or anything. Um, my understanding is there's supposed to be a revenue meeting in August and that's, we'll probably know more then. They pretty much have said they don't know. They don't know how much, they don't know any part of that. Um, so August is probably the date when they're going to be starting to know some of that information.
Okay, so nothing definitive prior to the, the referendum vote in July now? I guess I'm just trying to be proactive as a school committee because we all know we're going to be in a financially, uh, unfavorable position by next year, so.
Yeah, yeah, they really aren't giving anything that I know of. I don't know if Matt's heard anything other than that. But the, the business managers, they really haven't told us anything of how much. They just say it probably is going to happen, we just don't know by how much.
Gotcha.
Hey, Don, this is Jonathan.
Uh, yeah, Jonathan.
I'm glad you brought that topic up because at some point when we can meet, uh, safely, face-to-face in executive session, uh, budget conversations ought to be at the forefront really soon.
That's a good point, Jonathan. Uh, anything else for Cheryl? Any questions, comments, anybody? Okay, then let's move on to Steve. What do you have for us tonight, Steve?
Uh, good evening. Um, I'll be talking later in the agenda about the crisis plan. So I have a short report for you, um, this evening, just to update you on a few things. Um, the first thing is update on our CACFP, our After-School Meal Program Workshop from last week. Um, Emily in Hanselman, Holly Hartley, Shonda LaPointe, Lori Williams and Heidi Barker and I met on Thursday to continue the discussion around what the CACFP program might look like in Sanford. We discussed the challenges and we brainstormed some possible solutions to those challenges. Um, the group, um, is exploring what a pilot program might look like at Sanford High School. Um, we have another meeting scheduled for this Thursday and we hope to have a proposal, um, to bring before you sometime in June. Um, if not for the June 1st meeting, but hopefully by the June 15th meeting. Um, just an update on kindergarten screening. It's on the minds of a lot of, um, incoming kindergarten parents. Um, last week we made a determination to postpone kindergarten screening until the fall. Um, we've set some tentative dates as, uh, October 30th, August 31st, September 1st and September 2nd. Um, those registration packets are going to be in the mail this week. Um, traditionally we have used that information from screening to plan for the summer programming for incoming kindergarten students called Jump Start. Um, we will not be having Jump Start program this summer. Um, but we are looking at what are the possibilities we can do for our incoming kindergarten students? Um, not, will not only benefit those stu, 32 kids, but all kids, all of our incoming kindergarten students. We're having discussions around that. And finally this evening, just to let you know, we have finished the placing elementary kids in their schools for next year with the reconfiguration project. Um, that was a beast, um, to say the least. Um, but we have finished that work and, um, placement letters will be going out in the mail on Friday. I just want to publicly thank Rosie Dunn from Ledgmere and Ann Lord from our office. Um, basically we have two systems, two student management systems that don't talk to one another. And so we had to compare, um, kid by kid, what Ledgmere had and what we had in our office to make them match. And last week we came to where every student is placed at the same school, at the bus company and on our end. And so we're at a good point. Um, once we get through this, we're going to make it so our systems talk to one another, um, to hopefully improve the process for both of us moving forward. So that's what I have on my end tonight and I'll talk to you a little bit later about the crisis plan.
Great, thanks, Steve. Any questions from anybody for Steve? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Bernie, curriculum. What you got for us, Bernie?
Good evening. Um, this evening I'm going to speak a little bit about summer professional development offerings that we have here in the district. We have, um, put out our regular feelers to see what teachers would like to have um, for professional development offerings, what are their needs? And it is no surprise that half of the offerings this summer are based on technology needs. Um, we have 26 offerings at the elementary level and 14 of those are technology-based. 22 offerings for the m, middle school, 11 of those are technology-based. And at the high school, there are seven offerings with three of those technology-based. So technology is the name of the game, especially with our virtual situation. And our, um, summer PD is going to be delivered in a virtual format as well. We have spent a good deal of time making sure that we have facilitators for all of these things. There will be no PD in July as usual, with the exception of Per, uh, Promethean Board Training, which we hope will be scheduled the last week in July for those teachers who are going to be at Margaret Chase Smith School who are getting state-of-the-art technology and for Sanford Middle School teachers. If all falls into place, um, that's being spearheaded by John Wright. And we have, as part of our contract, the representative from Promethean coming and actually working with teachers. They'll be on their boards, learning the technology and that person will be working from a distance and basically showing them the steps, um, step by step. Some of the offerings that we have are based on things that teachers found that they needed, um, this year as we kind of fell into a distance learning situation. Um, we have decided as a result that we are going to have some basic operational platforms. We'll be using something called Seesaw, um, for grades K to three. And in grades four through, um, 12, we'll be using the platform known as Google Classroom. Teachers will be trained in those this summer. Everyone will know what they need to do. We're going to be setting ourselves up so that regardless of what the mode of operation is when September rolls, teachers will be prepared to know what those online platforms are and how they work for their students. In addition to those, we have lots of workshops that being, that are being offered in math and ELA. We have handwriting without tiers, uh, for the lower levels along with phonics. And, uh, of course mathematics is always big. We have virtual book studies that are being offered. And the wonderful thing about this is that teachers have generated these lists and then we've found in-house trainees. So it's really a cost-effective measure and a cost-effective way of doing this. Also, we're not doing day-long training. We're doing the sort of modules and hours, either hour blocks or two-hour blocks. And teachers are compensated accordingly. One thing teachers really wanted to know was how to make videos that they could use to front-load and, um, things like virtual notebooks and virtual book clubs are going to be taking place. And I think what you're going to find is that we are going to be, um, well-positioned to take on anything that we're faced within the fall. That's it.
Excellent, very exciting, Bernie, very exciting.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, uh, for Bernie? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to Mr. Peterman. Graduation update, I think this is what a lot of people are tuning in for, Matt. No pressure.
Yeah. Well, good evening. Um, I'm just giving you a little bit of an update. I know we had talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Um, so I'm pleased to announce that the graduation committee has designed a ceremony to celebrate this year's Sanford High graduates. While adhering to current CDC and State of Maine and Department of Education COVID-19 restrictions, we will conduct a drive-through style graduation, uh, that will start at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 10th. Following the graduation ceremony, a procession of 2020 graduates will travel in vehicles on Main Street, uh, from our, uh, Main Street entrance down to Springville at 7:00 PM. This gives the community and those unable to attend the ceremony an opportunity to cheer on and acknowledge the class of 2020 and their accomplishments while social distancing, uh, along Main Street and, uh, doing that. Um, so essentially our, our campus would be closed. Uh, all graduates would receive a ticket, um, unless they live in a dual household. Uh, we would make exceptions for that. Graduates will be riding as passengers in the cars. Um, and we'll begin to assemble on the southeast side of the high school, uh, starting around 3:00 PM on the 10th. We will read the speeches live. And then vehicles will be through a carefully choreograph, choreographed and, uh, controlled way. Vehicles will approach the stage, which would be in our bus loop. And students, uh, graduates at that time would exit their vehicle uh, as cars continued to move up and they would line up being spaced out accordingly. They would receive a diploma and allow for pictures, uh, as they move across the stage. And, um, obviously Studio by the Pond would be there, taking the, the graduate photo, uh, as well. So in order to do this, we're gonna, um, 104.3, The Legends, has been working with us. Um, we're going to be allowed to use their frequency to broadcast the ceremony live right into people's cars. Uh, obviously when you're on-site, uh, we have a pretty big Wi-Fi umbrella. So you'll have the ability to watch, uh, this live stream, uh, through WSSR TV, uh, on their YouTube page. Uh, we would get that link out obviously, so you'll be able to watch everything that's going on on the stage live. And obviously if we get rain that day, um, we would push to the 11th, uh, which would be the next day, so. As of this point, Monday, June 8th, we do, is traditionally our senior awards night. That will be like the top 50 banquet and it will be pre-recorded and broadcast at 6:00 PM, um, via WSSR TV. And as of this point, I think that covers the plan.
Okay, um, I'll start out with a couple of quick questions, Matt. Uh, I guess my first thing with this is communication. Uh, what's the plan to communicate this out? Cause I think the, kind of the key to success is ensuring everybody knows exactly what's expected and kind of the flow of how everything's going to go.
Yep, um, we have letters that, uh, are ready to go out to seniors, uh, and their, and their families. Uh, they're packed up and ready to go. Um, then obviously we have many methods that we can get it out via our website and social media. Obviously, as we start moving, uh, closer to that date, we will have, um, not what would be called the traditional marching practice, uh, but we will have sessions in which, uh, we'll have the graduates come in, uh, in order to pick up their yearbooks, cap and gown, and for them to see how the stage is set up and, and work with them so they will know how, uh, this is going to flow, uh, when we, when they show up with their parents. So it'll all be directed and, um, obviously as soon as we get this out, uh, we'll start working on the social media aspect and the, the website access, um, letting people know what's going on for graduation.
Well, yeah, I'm actually, I'm glad you brought up the marching practice thing because I thought that was the one part of the letter, um, where it just seemed a little like marching practice is going to start. It didn't have a lot of detail, so as a parent, I could see getting it be like, what? Now I have to get my kid in for marching practice because normally it's a, a week-long process, so.
Because normally, it's a week-long process, so just getting it out there now, so everyone understands that it's really more of a, you know, they come in for an hour in small groups, they get their stuff, they're taught, they're kind of told what's going to happen. Am I correct there?
You're correct, absolutely.
So, ten officer asks that people might have there.
Yeah, we figured we'd have about seven or possibly eight groups over, and we would have to do it over the course of two days. So one day of marching practice actually takes us two days. Lot of logistical things we're trying to still do, including taking the senior class photo. Obviously, we can't do it with them sitting next to each other, so we're looking at some Photoshop possibilities of putting photos together. So again, with those groups, you know, cap and gown, picking up other stuff, yearbooks, things like that.
Yeah, gotcha. Do you have any sort of, like, what's the communication plan with that? Is that something where it's going to be coming out in email? What should parents be looking for, I guess, is my question there?
Well, as soon as this letter goes out, we will, we'll start posting. A lot of the kids are very responsive via email. And then the, the class officers who've done an exceptional job through all of this have done a great job of getting it out via their social media as well. So once we devise who's in each shift for the practices, we'll get that out and it'll be up on the website, on our social media, plus they will put it out to the students themselves. We're also looking out for students who potentially have a, you know, a transportation issue and things like that, since we are looking to have a drive-through style graduation. So we'll be reaching out to people we need to get in touch with about transportation as well.
So if anybody's watching now and they know a kid that's graduating that maybe doesn't have access to a car, what should they, just like call the school, email you? Is that the plan?
Absolutely. Either way, they can call the school or they can, you know, send an email directly to me. Either way, works.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Peterman?
Yes, I have a question. So I I just want to say that, you know, kudos to this class and all of the class of 2020 across the United States and how they're handling this. I think they're handling it better than some of us parents. So they've just, with an enormous amount of grace they're handling this situation. So I just wanted for, you know, I had emailed Mr. Peterman and Mr. Nelson last week. And I just wanted it to kind of be put out there, because I know that there are parents watching from home right now that are wondering why there can't be some sort of more traditional graduation. I see your face, where we use that big, beautiful alumni field to spread out. You're not finding anyone in Southern Maine at this point that is holding anything remotely like that, correct?
No, and I meet each week with a group of York County and Cumberland County administrators each week. And we're all trying to do this following the guidelines. Somebody had brought up at one point in time that they thought there might be a waiver out there. And, and I think Mr. Nelson put it very nicely in the email back to you that if there would have been a waiver opportunity, I would have hand-delivered it up to Augusta, to the governor herself. Just because we love our traditional ceremony. Unfortunately, with the restrictions, it's tough. So we devised a way that we think we get everyone on campus. A lot of other surrounding districts are either going with this or they're doing like ten graduates at a time. You get to bring two guests and that's it. They get to go in, see them walk across the stage and that's it. So they're doing, you know, ten at a time. We figured this way, at least everyone can hear it, see it live. It's all one ceremony versus seven or eight small ones.
And I'll just want to add in at this time, too, that today's May 18th, the ceremony is June 10th. With COVID-19, a lot of things are changing. And so if something was to change, where I think that we would be able to have a more traditional program, for example, at Alumni Stadium, I feel very confident, very comfortable in Mr. Peterman and his staff, that we could pivot to that program, to be able to do that, I think, easily. If there was something that was going to come back and happen to change like that. This is what we're looking at, but if we are, if for some reason, it does things open up and we have something like that, I do think, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we'd be easily, in a way, that we could pivot to that type of program very easily.
Hundred percent.
I think could you explain to it, it sounds like you're not giving up on like senior game night. That's kind of postponed in hopes that, you know, like later on down the road, when we can start gathering again, that they may be able to gather and see each other and hang out.
Yeah, and I have to thank Emily and the rest of the Project Gradparents. You know, they've hung in there with us on this. And we typically have our senior banquet and we have our senior games night. We give away prizes. It's a lot of fun. The hope is, is that we're going to attempt to hold out. We don't know, because I mean, if you read everything with the governor's plan, it's groupings of fifty or less right through August. However, we could even hold on to, you know, the monies for those specific things for next year and potentially have it as, you know, granted, it would be a one-year reunion. We would have an opportunity to potentially do that as well. So, yeah, we're holding out, hope that we could maybe do something.
I just want to do either one of our, not to put you on the spot, you don't have to say anything, do either, I see a hand up. Do either one of our senior reps want to say anything?
I was just going to go there, Emily. Good call.
I have a question about the ticket thing. What is that? I didn't quite understand what that was.
Each graduate will get a ticket for one car to come onto campus. Unless you live, you know, in a split household where, you know, mom and dad don't live together, divorced parents, things like that. You would obviously come see us and we'd make sure that we got tickets for both vehicles then.
How do we make, sorry. How do, so we just contact you if we need that?
Well, that's part of the, the process when we come in for marching practice.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So they're going to be, like, is there already a schedule made for, made for like the marching practice thing? Since it's coming up really soon and I have to request data from stuff like that.
Yep, my hope was to get the, get the letters out and then once we get that posted, we'll get a schedule out to you guys ASAP.
Our, what we were doing was holding off on that letter for this meeting right here, just to make sure that we were all set going ahead. So those, Matt, I think if I got it right, those are ready to go right out in the mail tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Matt, I think Ariel brings up a good point, though, with the, the marching practice. And I'll put that in quotes, since it's really just kind of a more of an orientation thing. A lot of the kids I know are working now, like almost full-time or if they don't have vehicles. Are you going to have some flexible, maybe like even like an evening session of that to accommodate them?
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be some flexibility there, because like I said, we're going to have to have several groups go through because of the size of the class. We're about 230 students, so, you know, we got to split it up so we don't exceed our maximum.
Yeah, I got you. Anything else from our student reps?
I don't have any, like, questions or anything, but I do think this is a good alternative. Because I know that we can't have like the traditional, so I do think that this will go well.
That's good, Natalie. Mr. Peterman thrives on positive reinforcement, so it's nice to hear you giving him a little bit.
Thank you for not choosing a virtual thing.
What was that, Ariel?
He said, "Thank you for not choosing a fully virtual thing."
A lot of people have put a lot of effort into trying to figure this out, so that whole group deserves some kudos. Any other questions or concerns or anything from anybody on the school committee?
No.
And keep up the good work, Matt. And I'm sure it's kind of a work in process, so just keep communicating it out there. And hopefully, cross your fingers, everything works out great that night.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have a spring sports update from Gordy.
Good evening.
Gordy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about senior spring recognition. There was a lot of hard work that went into it. Need to thank Zach Lemlin, Sarah Snell, and my assistant Becky Cleveland, who all were part of this. First thing I did was send a letter out to the seniors and it was put out on the school website. And we worked very hard after that to put a slideshow together and Sarah has that now. That she's helping with Erica Serrano to put the music. So that should be coming out on the school website in WSSR pretty soon. I thought it was important to make sure that we recognize everybody in some of the activities. So I made sure that the band, Winter Guard, chorus and drama people were all afforded the opportunity to be recognized with the posters and be part of what we did with those. So with the posters, we got them, we, we put them up last Thursday on the fence line behind the scoreboard in Alumni Stadium. So everybody could have the day to drive-through and view those and take pictures. And certainly, there were a lot of people that drove through and were able to recognize all the seniors and get pictures in front of it and quickly get back into the car. Then later that night, on Thursday night, across the country, it's called Light Up. Light up your field, basically. So a lot of schools across the country just turn the lights on. It's a silent recognition of all the seniors. And we had the lights on one minute for every person on the fence line that was recognized. And then we also, Sarah was there graciously and she took a, the drone and took several pictures of that happening. And she is also working hard to put together that event to also get that on WS, WSSR and also on the school website. Also, also, when you could go up to the side by the bleachers and the scoreboard said 2020 and all the kids' names by sport or activity ran across the scoreboard. And then Friday, to culminate it, all the coaches of all their individual sports took the, we had gift bags with their posters. There was a T-shirt in there that had the Spartan hat on it. It said, "Senior Athlete 2020" and on the back of it, it said, "Undefeated", which we liked. And also in the bag was a tumbler, which says Sanford Spartans on it and also their certificates and letters and pins. And so the coaches delivered all those on Friday and I think that went over well. And we were, we were very happy to be able to provide some recognition in a tough sports season that did not take place.
Got you. That's it, Gordy?
Yep.
I think that was a great, phenomenal tribute. The videos are actually up on WSSR already.
Great.
Once again, a great shout-out for Sarah for taking her time to do that. I think she'd already been working all day ahead of that, so even better. But I, you know, it's, it's, it kind of almost makes up for not having a season. It's at least a good effort. So thanks for everybody that put time and effort into that. And I know the kids appreciate it.
And I play tennis and stuff and I did really appreciate it. I thought it was really amazing, so.
Great.
So you have your banner up on the wall, Natalie?
What?
Is your banner up on your wall now?
No.
Hey, you'll see, you'll find that 20 years from now and you'll be, you'll smile and think fondly of your years playing tennis.
I will.
Anything else, Gordy? You all good for now?
Oh, I'm good for now.
Okay, thanks. We will move, anybody have any questions for Gordy? Sorry, before I move on? Nope, we're all good. Okay, let's move on to news, new business. We have the crisis management plan. Steve?
Okay, the Sanford Schools Emergency Crisis Plan. Main state law requires that every school district have an emergency management plan that is reviewed and approved at the start of every school year. Over the past several months, we have reviewed and updated the Sanford Schools Emergency Management Plan to address our current facilities and equipment. It was really a good time to go through it with all the construction projects we've had the past several years. It was really a good time to do a complete deep dive into it from start to finish. I want to say a big thank you to Mike Gordon, Skip Sheldon, Matt Peterman, Joan Wright and Liz Dudgeon for their assistance with this project. The purpose of the Emergency Management Plan is to provide a framework of policies, procedures, guidelines and organizational structure that enables the Sanford Schools and its community partners to effectively mitigate against, prepare for, respond to and recover from all emergencies and disasters involving the Sanford School Department and its schools. Every school encounters situations that require the normal operation of the building to be amended, diverted or halted. These situations can include fire drills or the death of a student or faculty member or a major crisis that has a potential to impact the safety of members of the school. This plan provides a framework for response. No guide or emergency plan can substitute requisite common sense and calm necessary during an emergency. However, the consistent use of the practices established within the guide will help facilitate the smoothest operation of the school during a crisis or emergency. Goal of this plan is to ensure the safety of all members of the Sanford School community and to preserve the well-being of the Sanford Schools and continue education through rapid, coordinated, effective response to and recovery from emergencies and disasters. The plan is intended for use by school administrators, faculty, staff, students and emergency responders. It is also intended to inform parents and community leaders of the school's planned actions in response to emergencies as a way of preparing families and local officials before an emergency occurs. The plan's format follows the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, or phases of emergency management. The first phase being mitigation. Mitigation and prevention require inventorying the dangers in and around each of our facilities and identifying measures to prevent, reduce injury and property damage. This includes our annual safety audit that is done at all school, our safety team that meets monthly and our violence prevention programs such as Second Step. The second phase is preparedness. This phase focuses on planning for likely or worst-case scenarios. And this section of the plan really incorporates the incident command structure and the roles and responsibilities of the members of our crisis teams. The third phase is response. And this is really devoted to the steps that the Sanford Schools and community partners must take in an emergency. This includes responses that students participate in drills such as clear the halls, shelter in place, evacuations and lockdowns. Final phase will be recovery. And that section of the plan deals with how the Sanford Schools and community partners restore the learning and teaching environment after an emergency. It focuses on students and facilities and the need to take as much time as necessary for recovery. Major goal is recovery is provide a caring and supportive school environment. And that's really the psychological first aid that happens after a crisis. Over the summer, the plan is coming before you tonight, but over the summer, we will need to update the staff names and phone numbers of new folks coming in and review our emergency evacuation sites as well. This fall and throughout the school year, we will review our emergency drills with staff as well. And just keep in mind that this plan that's coming before you tonight is a fluid document that's meant to come before you every September now for formal approval for you after the administrators have a chance to review it in the summer. Do you guys have any questions?
Anyone? I don't think so, Steve.
Nope.
So do you need action on this? I see we have a recommendation to adopt the crisis management plan as presented.
I would make a motion to adopt the crisis management plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Emily beat you out, John. Emily gets a second. Any discussion? Uh, St. John will take the vote. Uh, Kendra?
Yes.
Uh, Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Congratulations, Steve. You have a crisis management plan that's been approved. Uh, okay, next thing on the agenda, we have the spring coaches stipend. I believe we have another presentation from Gordy.
Hello, thank you again. Um, I'm gonna read this uh memo that I sent to Matt Nelson and uh then I would answer any questions that you may have. My assistant athletic director Zach Lemlin is here to support and talk about anything that I might miss. Um, I write this recommend, uh, I write to recommend the question that the school, Sanford School District Administration and Board of Education found that two thousand twenty spring season high school and middle school coaching staff at a hundred percent of their stipend. As decisions evolved in reaction to the COVID nineteen pandemic, I have followed conversations regarding spring coaching stipends at school districts throughout the state. Initially, these conversations began as no season, no pay. Or recently, you'll find the school districts specifically range from fully funding stipends, partial payment and no, and just in one instance in our area, no payment at all, and that school is revisiting that. Um, I make this recommendation because quite simply I believe it's the right thing to do. Great coaches running outstanding programs requires a year-round commitment. True, the bulk of their coaching takes place during the spring season, but most have spent time preparing prior to the season, attending um meetings around the state and also with the MPA and league. Uh, further than uh attend state and associate coach meetings to further knowledge for professional development opportunities and run summer program, uh programming, and most importantly, a very valuable resource for our student athletes and for many, the most influential person eh or role model in their life. The MPA spring season just happens to be in a timeframe in which they are compensated. The Sanford Athletic Department is fortunate enough to have outstanding, well-respected coaching staff. Today's age, it is often difficult to find good coaches and we should continue to strive to be a school district where coaches want to be here and coach. The Sanford coaching staff has made a commitment for the spring season and had no control over losing the season due to the uncertain times, and I believe we should honor the commitment our coaches have made. Coaches coach for the love of the sport because they are competitive and provide lifelong memories for their student athletes. It is also important to recognize that coaching stipends also means of income for many and in some cases it is income that was budgeted for. Additionally, it is income that is important for retirement calculations. And I know as a young educator myself, my, in my career involved coaching three sports because I love coaching, but I also because I relied on the stipend to help support my young family. I'm also very proud that the Sanford School Department has made every effort to maintain all district employees at a curtain, at curtain salaries or hourly wage. And I feel strongly that our coaches should be treated the same. The school district will gain significant savings with reduced transportation costs, official fees and other related athletic expenses due to the cancellation of the spring sports season. And I respectfully submit this uh memo for your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordy. Um, I'm speaking for myself. I, I agree. I mean, I think coaches are a huge part of every kid's education, uh, you know, as an athlete. Uh, but we also, as school committee members, have the financial responsibility for the community, so. I know it's speaking with, we've received a number of communications from coaches, speaking with some of the other school committee members. Um, you know, we've definitely gotten input from both sides of this. Uh, so I guess this is, anybody have any questions for Gordy or Zach, right? No? Um, actually, let's go to Matt then. Hey, Mr. Nelson, uh, what's your recommendation on this?
Uh, thank you, Don. Uh, first off, I want to uh thank Gordy uh for his advocating for our coaches. Uh, that was an excellent letter and extra support for them uh to look at that. Um, I um, as someone who coached myself and as someone who used to be an athletic director, uh, I think we all understand the uh importance that uh coaches play, the role. I think Gordy did a really good job of outlining all the different steps um and different pieces that went through this. Uh, I think on Friday, March thirteenth, we probably had our coaches planning their first opening practices and, and what that was gonna look like, and no one would have ever envisioned that we were at a point where the uh season was canceled. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't want to have to go back and, and repeat what Gordy said, but I do, um, but I also know that we also, as Don, you mentioned it, we also have a responsibility as well um as well to our citizens or our community. COVID nineteen's been very difficult uh for everyone. Uh, more, in, in some cases, it's been difficult more for families where people are losing their jobs or losing their positions. Um, so it is definitely a balancing act. As a superintendent, I have to uh take into consideration here that it's uh, that it's tough. So uh I think as Gordy mentioned, you're looking at um what the recommendations are uh not only for our league um or for York County or for those schools that send their students to SRTC. Um, we want to be careful that. I know that I think it's important for us to send our coaches a message that we value them and the commitment that they're making to us. So um I do uh support a stipend, knowing where it is with the uh challenges that are out there uh regarding the community as well as our own financial considerations that we have to pay attention to. Um, my recommendation would be uh more of a tiered system for the coaches. I would recommend that our varsity uh coaches uh receive a stipend of um seventy-five percent. I would then look at our sub varsity coaches receiving a stipend of fifty percent and our middle school coaches receiving a stipend of thirty-three percent. Uh, I know that uh falls short of what everyone looking for the full stipend, but at the same time, I think that's able to recognize the important role that they play. But I also think it's gonna have to be something that through all of these challenging and difficult times um that can also be supported. So that would be my recommendation. I think as you look at it, Gordy had talked about uh what we were looking at for um um for the savings. And so I just want to outline with people that are uh for a spring sport uh stipend, we budget uh over sixty-seven thousand dollars for that. We have to remember that there were three of those positions that we had not filled. And so knowing where we were, we didn't go and fill those, so that's gonna be a savings. Um, actually bringing that contracted down to fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventeen. So if we were gonna look at um something where um what we were looking at for savings with what I recommended is a seventy-five percent, uh fifty percent, thirty-three percent, uh that would um then have uh a savings of thirty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. If you then look at what we estimate in terms of the savings that we have by the busing that didn't take place this spring, that's uh over fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And then if you also look at the fees that are paid for our um umpires and our officials, uh that's uh over twenty-five thousand dollars. So that would bring a total savings of eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And yeah, that's, you know, that's uh significant money, but I also think that also works for those people right now who, as much as they see a value in a coach, also aren't sure that they can support it. I think this shows that even by supporting that to that level, we are able to also maintain savings. So that would be my recommendation.
Uh, thanks, Matt. Um, I think I would have looked at that from a different direction. Um, I think those savings that we're putting out there are really just gonna be something we need to beg for next fall, next year. Um, you know, it's hard to say it's savings when I think going into next fall, we're gonna be trying to not let people go.
And I, and John, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I also, savings is probably not the right word in terms of that. We are also in a situation where when our audit came in uh this year, as you know, we had money from our carryover that was down. We had uh some outside placement costs that were a lot higher than what we anticipated. And so with that, I did put a budget freeze into, in, into place right in early January. So that, you know, when we look at savings, yeah, I, I think that's probably in, in quotation marks because of the, the context that we're in.
Yes, I, I'd rather look at it as, you know, we see the value in the coaches, so we're willing to pay that forty thousand dollars that we wouldn't be paying if we didn't do any stipends at all, you know? Um, and we do definitely value the coaches. I don't think there's anybody on the school committee or administration that would a little of that position. It's a lot of work. It is year-round. So I, I agree with what you're putting out there. I like it. Um, any input from the rest of the school committee?
Yeah, Don, it's Jonathan. You know, it, it takes a lot of pieces to build a school district and this is, this is one piece, an important one, but to everyone, um, it's like a budget, right? It's like four thousand line items and every line is important to somebody. Sports is important, as is band and, and math and you name it, it's all important. So we all know that we're gonna have to tighten our belt uh over the next six months. We just don't know how bad it's gonna be. So taking a bite out of this is necessary. Um, whether any, you know, I, do I like it? No, but I, I know that it's important uh to, to take a bite everywhere we can and I think we've found some middle ground here.
Gotcha. Any uh questions or input from anybody else?
Yeah.
Kendra?
Yeah, I would say that um, you know, they had a nice article in the Sunday Telegram. I think it was over a week ago now and quite honestly, I read that three times. Um, and it, it's just a struggle all the way around. Every school district is struggling with it. Um, like you said, Don, we got letters um both from coaches, w- which were very articulate, but as well as uh local taxpayers too. So um, I didn't know what direction we can go in. I just feel like we have to find some balance and be fair to everybody concerned, every constituent, including the coaches, because um I think we, as you said, we really value what the coaches do year-round. I know the coaches don't just stop working with the students once the season's over. That definitely doesn't happen and they just add a lot more than anyone really realizes. So um, I guess I like Matt's recommendation. I think it takes a lot into accounts uh and is trying to be as fair as possible to all concerned.
Okay, uh, well, with that, I think I will make the motion to structure the spring coaches stipends at the seventy-five percent for varsity, uh fifty percent for, how'd you word it, Matt? Sub varsity?
Yep.
And then thirty-three percent for middle school?
Yep.
Okay, second from Jonathan. Uh, do we have any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I'll take the vote. Uh, Kendra?
Yes.
Uh, Emily?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So there we go. Uh, so that's that. Thanks, everybody for jumping on. That was, they were on just to watch that. Let's move on to the food service bonuses next. Uh, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I, I, th- th- this is on the agenda. I've been working closely uh with our food service workers. We, I think we've got a core group of them. Um, I think uh sixteen, um, counting real quick, um, seventeen uh people who have been really the core group uh ever since that we started our uh meal distribution plan. If you remember, we had started doing this with um firstly, just pickups. We had a pickup area at Memorial Gym for lunch and we had a pickup area at Lafayette School. And as successful as those were, we knew that we were not meeting the needs of our district, so our, our food service workers uh worked uh together and came up with uh putting a program together really right on the fly. And uh at a point where now we are um daily getting uh almost fifteen hundred meals, if not more, out a day um for that. We're at a point now where uh as of today, our meal service has pro- provided ninety-eight thousand and twenty meals to our community, to our students. And we're gonna reach over a hundred thousand meals uh probably tomorrow or Wednesday. And as you look at that, that is mind-blowing. Uh, I've um, the food service workers have come over, asked me to come over and uh see all the work and the different things that they have in action. I know that um they've also asked uh some of the school committee members who've also gone over to watch their operation in action. And if you look at, you know, COVID nineteen and our school closures had a big impact on everybody. But if you look at really whose responsibilities have probably changed uh significantly or changed the most, it would probably be these seventeen workers uh who are showing up every day to be able to come in and be able to provide that service. I know that there's been situations where some other area districts have recognized their food service workers and also been able to recognize them with um some um, some uh a- additional compensation. And so that was something that has been uh requested um from obviously our, our food service workers just because of the, the scope and the change of everything that's going on for them. Uh, I think it is a reasonable uh legitimate uh request based on uh as I've mentioned, all of the changes and the things that they've had to go through, through this time. I think uh if you look at uh COVID nineteen, there's many things that we're proud of, but I think we would put the distribution, our food distribution and being able to keep our kids fed with uh lunch and breakfast right at the top of the list, if not the top of the list. And so for that, uh I think it's something to recognize with them. Uh, so I uh, I'd like to propose um I could, the school committee to take into consideration uh probably being able to recognize the seventeen workers, uh probably um, once again, as much as I'd like to uh offer up more, I think we also have to pay uh close attention to also the, the finances and the different pieces. So my recommendation would be to uh look at uh consideration of uh bonuses for our seventeen food service workers who've been actively uh taking this on each day uh and looking at probably a two dollar and fifty cent an hour increase uh paid out through as a bonus, and that would come out to just under fourteen thousand dollars um as what it would be for an expense. I know it's a big ask. I wouldn't bring that up if I also didn't feel like it was justified and warranted uh based on uh the human effort that they are doing to come back and help us.
Well, thanks, Matt. Um, I also want to, first of all, acknowledge the fact that it's a very uh awkward uh positioning here where we just talked to the coaches about having to take a little bite out of their stuff and now we're talking about giving some money to the food service workers. So I just want to acknowledge that, but with that said, I actually went down there with Mr. Mapes to watch the operation. It is phenomenal what they've done. I would use the term Herculean to explain what they've reorganized. You know, they're putting out, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand meals a day. But it's not the same as when they were just, you know, putting a tray of pizza out in the cafeteria. They're having to individually wrap everything. Everything has to go into coolers. They have to be very cognizant of the sanitation even more than normal. Uh, it, it was just amazing to see that operation. And then beyond that, when you talk about the community response to this, I, I've heard people just pretty much tell me that this has saved them. You know, just that little bit of normalcy, the kids being able to go out and get their meals, families where they've lost income and now they know their kids are gonna be fed. And it's, you know, the bus is coming right to their door, their neighborhood, so you know, saving them from having to go to the grocery store another day out of the week. So I, I'm at a hundred percent support of this, so. Um, any other school committee members want to weigh in? Questions?
Well, Don, it does Jonathan. I mean, I was, I was with you that morning and I, and I've heard great comments also, but it truly is, you know, when the, when the, when the going is tough, the tough get going. These people stepped up, not just for one day, but many weeks. I suspect, Matt, you probably proved this at another time, but Sanford probably served more meals by these workers than any other district in the state. In a very short period of time, they just don't put together a heck of a program on the fly. And it was a, I mean, Don, you work for a large corporation in, in, in distribution. These, these people put together a incredible mass production plan in uh less than ideal situations.
Uh, truly, and I, the coordinator's name, is it Lisa Stone? Do I have her name right? Lisa, I was so close. Uh, she was phenomenal. I, I can't say I, I can't say enough nice things about her. Okay, any other questions, comments, anybody? Okay, then I will make the uh motion that we accept Mr. Nelson's recommendation to offer a two dollar and fifty cent per hour bonus to the food service workers. Is that adequate, Matt?
Yeah, who are, who are actively involved in the uh
Actively involved in the uh food distribu- distribution during the COVID nineteen school closure.
Yep.
Yeah, D- yeah, Dawn, I'll second that just to confirm. I think it was roughly fifty-six hour, fifty-six hundred hours that Matt's talking about. It wasn't the whole school year. It's a short period of time that they were doing this.
Yep.
Yeah, so any other discussion? Okay, I'll take the vote. Kendra? Did I lose you, Kendra? You still muted?
I had to find myself. Uh, yes, I would vote yes enthusiastically.
Emily?
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Uh, so let's move on. Old business. I see none. Uh, resignations. Mr. Nelson, I'm trying to scroll down on the Zoom meeting for the agenda. Keeps driving me crazy.
Hey, Dawn, just before you guys get to that, I just want to say thanks for your consideration uh for the coaches. I appreciate your, your hard work and, and, and thoughtfulness uh with this matter. And uh, I, I didn't get a chance to say that before, but I want to make sure I said that. And then um, I will be leaving the meeting, so I just wanted, didn't want to just do that either. So thank you all.
Appreciate it, Gordy. Have a nice night. Okay, back to you, Matt.
Sure, so resignations. We have some uh uh that I do want to announce. Uh, Nate Glary is uh moving to Arizona. Uh, Cindy and Jeff McGill, a tag team who has helped us as retired educators for uh the junior high are doing another retirement. Nate McClellan resigning as assistant varsity football coach. Uh, Carly Moulton is uh got a grade three position that she's moving to uh closer to where she lives. I want to thank Sue Sinnet for her work as a special education teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Uh, two people who I really want to also recognize for their significant commitment to the Sanford schools. Deb Andrews resigning as a Title One teacher and Megan Walsh as our outreach worker. Um, you know, they've sort of been here for a while and really made a positive impact on our students and our educational community as well as the greater Sanford community. So I'd like to recognize them and publicly thank them for all of their efforts to be able to uh uh help students.
Uh, could I just um, oh, wait. Oops, wanted to jump in and uh really give kudos to Megan Walsh. I mean, going way back to the Safe Schools Healthy Students Grant and the um, there was another grant that went along with that. This woman has just maximized the staff and the, and the um availability for social emotional support in our district. Um, very creative and uh she's uh, she's done a great job. So uh she deserves her retirement, but um she's made a huge, huge di- difference in our um. And I can remember back with the Safe Schools Healthy Students Grant, there was a lot of focus on these are things that um without funding that, you know, you need to find a way to make them go on. And some of the things did not go on, but the things she started, uh, the vast majority have. So kudos to her.
I second that, Kendra. Okay, let's move on. Staff appointments, I see none. Uh, staff transfers.
Sure, Caitlin Brunel moving from a kindergarten teacher at Carl J. Lamb over to a uh grade one teacher, actually, Carl J. Lamb. And that's uh for next year.
Okay, uh, staff nominations.
Sure, we have a couple um that I'm excited about. Uh, Annie Monroe, nominate her as an art teacher at Sanford High School for the upcoming year. Um, replacing um, um, I think Lucy retiring. And then also Ashley Walker, uh, who will be stepping in as a special education teacher uh over at Carl J. Lamb as well. Really had a chance to meet with both of them and uh kudos to our hiring committees and kudos to them. I really impressed and excited about bringing them on uh to our team.
Excellent. Now, can we do all these nominations as one vote or do we have to do each uh line individually, Matt? What do you think?
Uh, I think how they're kind of split up a little bit, I think we'd want you to do it separately, if that's okay.
I was afraid that was going to be your answer. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the uh nominations as presented uh for section one. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, I'll take the vote. Uh, Kendra?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, so
Yeah, next I have a couple administrators um that uh nominating uh, well, I guess technically for new positions. The first one uh is Nicole Ivy, nominating her as our Sanford Community Adult Education Director. Uh, Nicole came to us um, started in January, early January uh more on an interim basis. Uh, we've had Nicole uh come and report to the school committee about a lot of the uh work that she's been up to and uh a lot of the positive things that she's been able to do. So uh, I think it's uh definitely a, I'm proud to uh nominate her to be our um going forward to remove the interim tag to be adult ed director. And then in terms of um Beth Lambert, um nominating her as a curriculum director. Not that anyone can replace Bernie, uh, but we'd have Beth uh coming in for that position. Once again, um, I'm very uh, very pleased uh to make this nomination. Beth had worked with um Bernie a couple of years ago um in a position up here um and, and done a really nice job with that. And then uh she did go uh to be an assistant principal down at Sanford High School. Now um, coming back to be curriculum director. I think she's going to be a great asset to our central office team. I think she's um got a lot of uh, especially that experience at the secondary level, both the high school and the middle school. I also think work with uh career pathways uh with that. And um, I think that uh Beth is going to be a, a great addition. So those are the two that I'd like to nominate for administrator positions uh tonight.
Excellent. I think they're both phenomenal and I expect nothing but incredible things from them. Uh, so I will make the motion to approve the nominations for adult ed and curriculum director. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I'll take the vote then. Uh, Kendra?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, so on to item number three.
Yeah, last uh school committee meeting, we nominated our teachers um for uh continuing contract or uh continuing probationary contract. This meeting, we're nominating our administrators uh for renewal contracts. Um, so uh Mike Bailey at uh Sanford Middle School, Sherry Barron, Carl J. Lamb School Principal, Stacy Bissell, Director of Special Ed, Tammy Delaney, um Assistant Special Ed Director for the district, uh Trish Leet for uh Carl J. Lamb Assistant Principal, Pam Lyden for Sanford Middle School Principal, Joe Mistracchio, Sanford Middle School Assistant Principal, Matt Peterman, Sanford High School Principal, Chuck Potter, Margaret Chase Smith School Principal, Mike Redman, uh SRTC Assistant Director, Gordy Salz, uh Athletic Director, Kathy Sarge- Sergeant, SRTC Director, Erin Tremblay, uh Sanford High School Assistant Principal, Troy Watts, Sanford High School Assistant Principal. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, my apologies for omitting uh mistakenly omitting Susan Emmon as principal for uh Willard School.
She didn't see the agenda and wonder why she wasn't on there, did she? Give you a call, think she was getting a pink slip?
That may have happened. I'm a, uh, I'm not proud to admit, but that may have happened. And that was a committee oversight. Very impressed with the work that Susan's been doing and
Actually, yeah, she's great. Okay.
I'll, I'll make a recommend, I'll uh make the motion to approve the nominations as presented, including Susan Emmon.
I will second that. Uh, any discussion? Okay, I'll take the vote then. Kendra?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, so now we're on to policies. As always, everybody's favorite part of the meeting. I think a number of the coaches stayed on just for this policy section, Steve, so no pressure.
Um, a quick policies this evening. We have a second reading of policy J I C K, which is our bullying and cyberbullying in schools policy and the accompanying procedure J I C K dash R. Um, this is a simple adjustment to the policy that's already in place and it includes the addition of gender identity or expression as a protected class in the policy. Um, this policy was last updated on October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Um, so the updated policy just adds this language to the policy and nothing else was changed. So rather simple adjustment.
Okay, so I will make the uh motion to adopt policy J I C K and policy J I C K dash R's second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, Emily slid in there. Uh, any discussion? Okay, I will take the vote. Uh, Kendra?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay, so now we move on to items for future agenda. Um, and I think kind of along the, the budget topic we were talking earlier, do we want to have a workshop at some point to talk about potential budget issues going into next year? I mean, do we want to get ahead of this thing? Do we want to wait and see if there's more guidance from the state? Just kind of thought I'd throw it out there and see what everybody thought.
Uh, Don, I, I think we should get ahead of it, but I'd like to uh preface that with the, the committee members comfort level of meeting personally in a safe space until guidelines ma- modified. But I mean, I, I'm okay uh meeting, you know, in the, in the right space. We've been doing it with the union uh negotiating teams right along and, and I think we could do something similar.
And any other thoughts from anybody?
I would just echo uh Jonathan. I'm, I'm comfortable at this point uh if we were to do a workshop um just amongst us maybe. Um, and you know, obviously uh social distance and, but I would be comfortable. I would feel better about this conversation if we had it in person uh rather than um, you know, via video.
I concur as well with that, Emily, so. I think just what I'm thinking is we're, we're heading into like the, the July referendum for the budget. I think we could show the, the citizens some good faith if we're starting to talk about this already, you know, going forward. So, Matt, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I, I, I think uh with our size of our group, we do meet the, the guidelines. We've been meeting down at the small uh cafeteria at the high school technical center and that space is enough that allows people to stretch out and keep the proper social distancing uh to be able to do that. I think more so than maybe what we would do here at central office for a conference room. So I think I would just recommend that as a location uh that seems to be able to allow people to get the proper space that they need um and follow their uh hygiene protocols.
Okay, and I think at this point, we're talking about something, you know, mid to the end of June, you know, let you get through. Maybe come up with some uh potential cuts if we need to go that route. Um, so we'll just put it out there. We at least have it on the, on the minutes as being discussed, so. Uh, anything else? Anybody else would like to see for uh items on a future agenda?
I, I, you know, I may not future agenda. I mean, it's, it's gonna be um eventually, but I, I missed it in Matt's update asking him, do we have um some sort of uh task force or uh some committee meeting that uh is working on contingency plans A, B, and C for the fall?
Yeah, we've started that work with our administrators um as we've been make uh working um, meeting weekly. Uh, we're trying to do, yes, planning the end of the year. We're trying to plan summer programming, but the third thing we're looking at is reopening in the fall. And there's probably three plans that we're looking at right now. One would be uh a plan that would be somewhat back to normal in the fall. Uh, the second plan would probably be somewhat of a um hybrid model of some distance learning and some return to school. And then the third one that I shudder to even talk about would be continuing distance learning with that. So yeah, those are things that we're working on to start to be able to look at that. We have, uh, we're looking to set our agenda for our administrative retreat at the end of the year. Uh, looking at a two-day June sixteenth and June seventeenth. As we met as the central office team last Friday, we're zeroing in on that reopening plan as far as being uh the, really the focus of our, you know, uh end of the school year retreat on those two days in June that we can really start to get out in front of that. We want to be planning. We don't want to be causing panic, but we also realize that things are changing as well. So we're trying to find that balance between waiting, but we also don't want to be in a situation where we find ourselves unprepared.
Yeah.
That was a great question.
I'm sorry, just going to echo off of, you know, uh, of course, everything's changing all the time and it's easier said than done. But you know, as we approach the fall and the opening, reopening of school, communication with parents will be key because so, you know, school opening or not opening or modified plan will be so critical to so many families and how their families can work with going back to work or childcare issues. Just that the moment that we could put something out uh as we get closer, the sooner the better for them.
Yeah, no, I think that was a great question, Emily, and I think it's something we should put on some agendas coming up just for that fact that families, parents, they, they need to know about it, you know, to at least know what we're thinking. Um, so I think that's great. And it's a, kudos to you, Matt, for kind of being a, being ahead of it a little bit. You guys were like that with distance learning. I think Sanford was one of the few districts that actually kind of jumped right on it and did a pretty decent job. So, uh, okay, anything else from anybody?
It's kind of like flying an airplane as you're building it.
Matt, I have to say, I have, you heard people on national television use that expression often recently, so.
You were just ahead of your time, Matt, just ahead of your time. Uh, that's too funny.
I just had one last thing. I know I'm a pain in the butt.
Get ahead, Emily.
But it's not a question. I just wanted to say, you know, um, this meeting has had a, a lot of highs and a lot of lows in this. That's kind of probably the name of the game for a lot of our school committee meetings going forward. There're going to be some good moments and there's going to be some really tough ones. But um, you know, I've only lived in Sanford for the past fifteen years. Um, I grew up in a, a much similar, small kind of town. Um, to me, this is a still small town feel and I couldn't be prouder of our school system and how we've handled this and um what teamwork has taken place with, and, and kind of just uh without being asked, just everyone doing their part and it's been just kind of this well-oiled machine. It's been bumpy, but for the most part, uh, from an outsider who has not been born and raised in Sanford, um, I'm super duper proud with everyone and um a big thank you to everyone for doing their part.
Well said, Emily. Uh, so we'll move on to calendar announcements. Uh, all we have on the uh thing here is just the school committee meeting, June first at six o'clock, uh, June fifteenth at six o'clock, location to be determined. Um, we also, I guess we could put graduation on there officially now too, right, Matt?
Yeah, I think uh that would be on there is Wednesday, June tenth. I think we can also look at uh, I know SRTC is looking, their recognition night, I think it's going to be a virtual ceremony still, but that would be Thursday, June fourth. And their um, their honor, um National Honor Society will also be virtual uh for SRTC and that will be right now tentatively Thursday, May twenty-eighth.
Okay, we also have awards tonight is airing June eighth, right?
Yeah, I don't have that. I'll, I'll have that in time for our next meeting uh Monday, June first.
And everybody watching out there, WSSR TV, that's the place to go. Watch where we go.
Uh, speaking of SRTC, I wanted to put out there that I've heard, I think um Plants Plus is going to be opening up and putting something, maybe, Matt, you have more of the details on that, but I think, I know Kathy um emailed us today, Emily, about helping. Um, anyway, I know that people should be looking for that, that they can buy plants from the uh SRTC in a safe way, right?
That'd be this, this Thursday and Friday, uh Kendra, uh, looks like. I know uh, I've got that on my to-do list. I let my wife know she doesn't need to buy them. I'm taking care of it, but I've got to make sure I get my reservations taken care of ahead of time because I think if you can do that, Because I think if you can do that, they can come back and it'll be easy pickup to be able to do that.
Excellent. Okay, um, so I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Who are you, Mr. Rue? You're letting me down, buddy. I'll second that. Any discussion on adjournment? It'll take the vote. Kendra?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We are officially adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night, thanks.